Seeing that it's a little after seven, we had to kind of coked up a couple teams, but I call this town board meeting in order. The fire exits are outside the door, go into the hall, and there is a defibrillator across the hall for anyone who may be. We will start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag and the home of the residents of Hamlin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, in everyty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will continue with the invocation from Pastor Chris Bodie of St. John's Church.
That's great. I would thank you for a beautiful day and for the arrival of spring, and we thank you for the town of Hamlin, for its leaders and its residents, for your blessing on each and every person who lives here, and for this town meeting tonight. You will give wisdom, guidance, decisions. We pray it honors you. We pray you feed the snake. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now, town board, call the roll, please.
Earl Buck.
Here.
Mail.
Excuse.
Vocal. Here. Gaggar.
Here.
Fuzz.
Here. We will have our public hearing forum. Seeing that there is no taker, you oppose in public forum. Requesting town board resolution to approve the regular town board meeting minutes of March 29, 2023.
Earl Buck.
Yes.
Vocal. Yeah. Gaggar.
Yes. Yes. Requesting town board resolution to approve the payment of bills in their respective funds.
Earl Buck.
Yes.
Vocal. Yeah. Gaggar.
Yes. We do not have a six-monthly monthly report, and I just got back from vacation a few hours ago, so I will turn it in tomorrow to the town. Number 10. Requesting town board resolution to make the following budget amendments for town board meeting for 10, 2023 as follows. Increased revenue account, eight, one, nine, nine, seven. Fed grant, ARCA funds, nine, six, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Increased expense account, eight, thirty-three, ten point two. Science expense, twenty-seven, nine, nine, five. And eight, seven, five, two, oh, point, four. History property contractual, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one.
Earl Buck.
Yes.
Vocal. Yeah. Gaggar.
Yes. Fuzz. Number 10. Negative declaration of environmental significance in conduct of local law. Screwed up. That should have been four dash two zero two three. Amendment chapter 520, article 6, miscellaneous regulation 520 dash 54 of the Code of the Town of Hamlin. Whereas town board of the Town of Hamlin did hold and conduct a public hearing to consider the enactment of the Local Law number four dash two zero two three, which public hearing was held and conducted on the 10th day of April, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. at the Hamlin Town Hall, 1658 Lake Road, Hamilton, New York, and whereas town board of Town of Hamlin is desirous of enacting such local law, and whereas it is necessary for the board to consider the impact of such local law on environment for sorts of provisions of the State Environmental Policy Review Act, and whereas the enactment of legislation in purely administrative function has such as a listed type-two action, an action that required no further environmental review, now therefore being resolved by the town board of the Town of Hamlin in O'Callaghan, New York as follows: That by adoption of this resolution, the town board of Town of Hamlin declares itself to be the lead agency to respect the consideration of your adoption of the proposed local law proposing to amend 520 dash 54 of the Hamilton Local Code. The town board finds in terms of such legislative action, the type-two action, and as such as an action that will have significant adverse environmental impact, and this resolution shall be considered a negative declaration for sorts of provisions of seeker. That the town board may take such permanent action or respect of such proposed local law without further regard to seeker.
Earl Buck.
Yes.
Vocal. Yeah. Gaggar.
Yes. Yes. Number 11. Inducting local law four dash two zero two three. Whereas the town board of the Town of Hamlin did hereby publish legal notice to consider the enactment of local law number four dash two zero two three, amending chapter 520, article 4, subsection 520 dash 54, of the Code of the Town of Hamlin, and whereas for such legal notice duly published, the town board of the Town of Hamlin did hereby conduct a public hearing to consider such inducting local law, which public hearing was held and conducted at Hamilton Town Hall, 1658 Lake Road, Hamilton, New York, on the 10th day of April, 2023 at 6:00 p.m., and at which hearing all interested persons were heard considering the subject matter thereof, and whereas if, after due consideration, the town board is desirous of enacting such local law, now therefore being resolved by the town board of Town of Hamlin in O'Callaghan, New York as follows: That the enactment of this local law is a type-two action in that it is a routine or continuing governing administrative management activity, and as such, the enactment of this local law will proceed without further regard to the State Environmental Policy Review Act. If the town board of the Town of Hamlin by adoption of this resolution does hereby enact, inducting local law number four dash two zero two three, amending chapter 520, article 6, subsection 520 dash 54, of the Code of the Town of Hamlin to read and write as follows: All above-ground storage tanks, all above-ground and underground tanks permitted as herein provided, shall be constructed, installed, and maintained in performance with the requirement of the New York State General Fire Department Building Act, and all other applicable state or federal regulations. The building permit must be obtained by Town of Hamlin Inspector prior to the placement or replacement of any storage tank over 499 hamlin. All above-ground tanks shall be properly screened for use of adjacent property. The town clerk shall give due notice of remanence of this local law by filing the same with the Secretary of State.
Earl Buck.
Yes.
Vocal. Yeah. Gaggar.
Is there any other resolutions or anything coming through tonight?
Oh, it's like a resolution. It's the donations to pay for fixed drainage of the shelter. We've been building from the ground. Any of the resolution? No.
No.
Okay, but how is the drainage? What was drainage doing?
Should probably know, you know what a price is.
No.
Before we had to okay a price, or to do it, we should have.
So I'll say it's okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, you hung on to the.
Yes, if there's no other resolutions, then we can totally come to me again.
Okay, so, yeah. The only other thing right now, we have three dogs in the shelter, and one is on death row. We're getting that little puppy, uh, puppy heaven, because he's too hard. He's really mean. I'm going to do it. For real.
Check.
Yeah. Trying to kill everybody always.
It's a very, it's a very aggressive, especially towards other hamlins, who just try to chew. Yes.
So someone torture.
Okay. Voting board material. Uh, there was a public hearing for 1360 Lake Road. Um, they came up with their base plan before there was no public comment. And it was approved, um, for four years. I bet we might have to come back to the board. Next was the public hearing for Benedict Beach Road for a hole farm to be constructed. That has to get re-advertised. Follow, um, of the variance, variance that it needed, so that's getting re-advertised and they're coming back. Next was, um, used variance for Kila construction on Masca Road. There's a lot of discussion around that. Couple neighbors came and voiced a couple concerns about water quality and, um, the millions that they're going to be housing there for like up to six months. They're going to get anything that's happening on them. And it's going to affect the nature of water quality. Weekend hours, they would touch on the hours. Operation, traffic, some things, operating. You know, they talked about how some of the mines, they even dry out the oil, the adjacent soils of neighbors, and the dust and wind has damaged some of their trees. So what the Kila representative said was, you know, they're more than willing to work with neighbors, take their concern seriously, and sit down and see what they can do to kind of mitigate the concerns. Their hours are Sunday through Friday about seven to five, and then on, you know, Saturdays, they send me. And then the emergency situation. Um, that was approved. They do have to come back. There was, um, actually two address for the operation, but only one was advertised, and they have to re-advertise the upper address and come back. Uh, next was, um, an area variance of a public hearing schedule for Hill Press Drive, or Chicken Inn, to have six chickens, that's less than one acre. And, um, this is something new, to have quail, could be quail. Um, the Chamber of Commerce had a meeting last week. It's like a happy hour sometimes, maybe breakfast, lunch. I have yards. People, so like I have a handler, yeah. Our next meeting is going to be at Moss Bay Play Cafe, um, when I hear that, here in Farm Station.
It's a person who, uh, Hamlin Martin Walker, Fire District. Uh, they've had 101 calls here to date. They had, uh, they did have one house fire on the Redmond Road. And planning board meeting, uh, respite at 179 Church Road. They had public hearing for that, and that was approved also at 179 Church Road. It was a residential single-室 subdivision. The same, that was approved. Had a special use, uh, permit application for 660 Walker, they can carry alone. That was scheduled for the public hearing. Um, they also had the solar farm, Sweden Walker Road, which is owned by NextEra Energy. There's a change of ownership, um, with that. It's now by a subsidiary of NextEra Energy. And there was a question, is, um, if we have to review the, that being the change of ownership?
You've got to sort of inspire yourself, and make sure you, um, inspire yourself with that one.
So you have to re-approve that again?
No, don't be re-approve.
Oh, okay.
Then one, no.
Um, and then we had a farming protection plan meeting in April 4. I just pretty much went over, we had results of the surveys we sent back. The results come out, let's see. It goes to the guys, and, um, just hold on where we are at as far as we've, um, had in markets. See, in update on farm fest, there was a lot of discussion about that, and, uh, everybody there knew that was a really good idea, I think, and it went pretty well. That's, that's all. No, yes, Director Cheryl.
Hey. Um, we had three permits issued in the last month until that town board meeting in March. Um, received, uh, one, $2,000, um, for the cost, which covers inspections by myself and by our marshal. Valuation of the permits were, um, overall over $289,000.
... pieces that were not on the tax rolls, such as barns, sheds, decks, pools, porches. And we've only done a third so far. We've added that much on. Um, I wanted to share with you guys some house sales that gentlemen came through that I just found out about. Um, this is what the market is still doing. So there was a 1,262 square foot ranch on Sweden Walker. It was just on the market last week. I mean, it's maybe three-quarters of a mile. Sweden Walker. I want you to remember, 1,262 square feet. I think there had to be 30 cars at the open house the day I drove by. On Benedict Beach. It's a little over 2,000 square foot ranch. It went on the market for 500,000. A gentleman called me this morning, he was putting an offer in, and all offers have to be in by Wednesday. He was told that it's going to go for at least 550 to 600,000. So when we thought the market was starting to flatten out a little bit, it doesn't look that way at all in this area.
Put the inventory down. It's the biggest thing, we're going to house a little bit.
I agree. But 410,000 for a 1,200 square foot home? I mean, that's just crazy.
The interest rates coming up and stuff.
But that's what I'm still dealing with, with the market right now. Cash offer. 410,000 and AS 280.
Is that being sold? Yep.
So.
About 3,000, no.
I've just seen it. I thought it was starting to level off. It's not. So.
But then you still got to find something if you sell it.
You should move it on the state.
That's what people are doing, selling.
So I just wanted to share that with you guys.
You know, I know, at least working here almost every day, maybe sometimes, maybe two or three guys are working hard and went out and did all the documentation. It hasn't been, what, 11, 12 years? Next year, 13 or something like that.
And when he did the reassessment 13 years ago, he did not update the photos. Like, we're updating the photos now. So it's probably been 18 to 20 years since the photos haven't been updated. So we are, and we're catching a lot of the inventory. Oh, gentle.
But I did take that. Did she get it? To take it down, the guy wouldn't put it out.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate that. Though we, we're trying to get it done. I want to get it done so I can work on my models and stuff, but he really doesn't.
Yeah, I know. It's hard to, you know, get it done for a lot of years. Carter, anything for consummation?
Well, Cheryl took away my only thing. I was talking to Ward on.
I'm sorry.
I thought you did that too, at 8:00 or 9:00.
I have anything. Yeah. Okay, nature.
First I'm going to bring up is that last meeting, we talked about getting the spectrum into history setting. Again, after I've been your people, free time, week, yes, CTEC, I finally, I finally got him to answer. He's been on vacation, I guess, and nobody else will be there anymore. Since normally, but anyways, it's $300 to work on the computer, the laptop the library gave him. That's to install all some backup program. So that, because of it's, it's probably not going to be just the town employees working on the computer. We were talking about genealogy and other people working, which we had to have some of the program. Like the library does, so you can't do something. So that's $300, and then hook it up to that lap, if it works, if that laptop works good. But then all of a sudden it could die in a week or.
But then all of a sudden it could die in a week or... What do you think tonight, questions about that? Are you going to use that? What's at worst, should we just do the lockdown and hope for just with laptop and everything?
Can you read all the news night today? Two thousand...
They go to the laptop and see.
They'll look at it.
Yes, that's part of that $300.
Yes, they said no. Yes, which Norm had been gone on vacation. They were supposed to contact him, I think they're supposed to contact him tomorrow. Because he told me it wouldn't be back till the end of the day. So we probably talk the inspector tomorrow about getting... Could be okay with that, but I assume so. And then we've just been working on stuff on the, working with Recreation Department. The Farm Fest is mostly, some of the other things in the jail we've been looking at, something. Trying to figure out things about this building, working on the sign. I signed the contract with the guy on the side, put the sign out front and everything. The town hall ladies picked the color.
And Josh, and so?
And Josh, and Josh, yeah, Josh. I stood out of it, I said, I got you the sign, that's your, you guys do this. So it will be coming, he said six to eight weeks. That was at least a week ago we did that. Probably five to seven weeks. How many people dig the holes, put the orders down? You don't figure that out? Yes, we had to make sure that I keep the gun key.
We like to pay. It stopped, not been going for control traffic.
It slowed down.
It slowed the traffic down.
Yeah. Yes. Very bad reason, the sewers are coming very well. We've been getting some complaints. Kind of complaining about, there's some Colorado. Like, oh, you're Colorado. I see this. A lot of the years, a lot of it's 50% done yet, except for rest... Yes, they, they got in... Report, is there any discussion there?
They just signed outside it on mid-May. We're going to have a little...
Did it through the chamber?
I don't know. They had a nice change of something.
Get your Dunkin' Donuts open up, they don't have that there. Grab a coffee and a doughnut. It will be, yeah. It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna look like...
Society and the whole...
Tops.
Tops, that's...
Yeah.
And I think it's really nice to pay money, you know? Once it can be made for patients.
Yeah, no, it's really nice in there.
We can appreciate that, thank you for that. Yes, man. I didn't need, we got the one, we went out to the D. We had to pay for that $80. $80 in application. We got one application for the paper. So I said, all right, we can't do this. We need to buy another, or should we do a D? And we got, we stopped. We were getting too many applications, so we actually stopped it. We interviewed tomorrow night, three people, Wednesday night, three people. There's a bunch of actually turned down and this is what they actually called it. Any of a lot of experience as far as accounting and stuff. We used to say, there's so many good applications. Right. So we got at least six that were doing it, none of them paying out. We can open it back up and do our pool a lot. We just put a pause on it. Yeah, hopefully our next move towards...
On the paper?
I don't know, Zach. Is that going to be the third night?
But not...